First meetings to remote audio participation meetings. To remotely attend a meeting, audio only, visit our website, The telephone access, remote access instruction, listed on the news and announcements on the homepage, or telephone the selectmen's office, six zero three eight seven five two one one three, or six zero three eight seven five zero two two nine. Between eight AM and four thirty PM for the dial-in code and meeting ID for each selectmen's meeting. There continues to be no public input at this time. If you wish to have something read into the record, please call the selectmen's office, six zero three eight seven five two one one three, or six zero three eight seven five zero two two nine, or email the selectmen@alden.nh.gov, or mail a letter to the board of selectmen at P O Box six five nine, Alton, New Hampshire, zero three eight zero nine. Your comments, questions, concerns, will be read at the next available meeting and answered at that meeting or the next available meeting. This time, gentlemen, I need approval of the agenda as submitted unless there's additions. Mr. Holt?
I have possibly two additions. It's up to you. Last week, we discussed the no parking signs, business hole business. They're still there. I didn't know what the progress was on that. That might be under old business.
No parking signs, where then?
Down by the village store. You know, the pizza place and the gym. Railroad, the railroad.
Correct, next to the railroad trail.
Lines, okay. And then in our package, we have a Winnipeg Marine construction quote. I don't see that on the agenda because if I remember right, last week it was a question of what account we were going to possibly expend that money from.
Right, so number two, public boat launch, that's where we brought up under. That's the one, that's where the quote will be at. And then discussion tonight is where we're going to pull the money from if the board decides to go ahead and pull. Okay, so that one we don't. But number five, we're putting the old business signs. The other additions to the agenda. Okay, at this point here, I need approval on the agenda as amended.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Phil Whitman to approve the agenda as amended. Second by Bernie McDonald. Let me do a discussion. At this point, then I will hold the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Lucille?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Yes, so this is permanent. Emergency management update, chief. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Absolutely. So the emergency management team still continues to meet. We're actually switched from meeting twice a week to once a week, starting this week. But thank you again for the opportunity to address the board and the members of the community. There have been few changes in Alton as the state has transitioned from the stay-at-home to the stay-at-home 2.0, and now to the current safer-at-home orders by the governor. The biggest change has been the opening of the first floor of the town hall. With the greeter in place out front, it has actually been a pretty smooth transition. Employees and the public face-to-face again, obviously with provisions in place. The next steps for the town will be opening the public bathrooms down by the Bay Area and removing the outhouses that are there, which I am sure will be a welcome change for the visitors and the businesses in that area. The emergency management team is hoping to get more public meetings again. Some smaller meetings have already been able to take place in the public in the high key room. With this happening and the public restrooms opening, we still need to manage our cleaning resources, which is our supplies and our manpower. The town can only open so at this time, we must wait and we will see these resources become available and get used up with the opening of the restrooms. But we're still going to maintain those universal guidelines and keep everything clean. Chief Dean and myself will also be meeting with the schools to help guide them on a safe opening, along with the guidance that was just handed down by the governor. And I'm sure the schools already have something in place and some plans. So they're going to do when they open back up. But again, please remember that things, as things are moving forward, coronavirus is still around and the town of Alton has done very well to stay healthy and safe. We want to keep that going. Social distancing is still needed and face coverings are recommended. As before and always, wash your hands often with soap and water or alcohol-based hand sanitizer. Do not cough or sneeze into your hands and disinfect your workspaces. If you have questions or concerns about how Alton is responding to coronavirus, feel free to contact myself, the police chief, or the public health director. For general questions about coronavirus, the state still has the two-on-one number set up. And again, the emergency management team thanks the board and the community for their continued support and patience.
We have any new cases in Alton, chief?
There are no new cases at this time.
The letter to the governor asking him why he's pushing us to open up and yet the state ain't opening up nothing. Think we should. I mean, I don't think we should open up anything until they show good faith down there. Can't get in the state office or anything else down there.
Let's put a couple of things on hold as far as we go with background checks and things like that.
Pretty well locked down down there.
Anything else for the chief? Well, chief, I want to come in. The emergency management team are meeting twice a week and doing due diligence and safety of the people. There's much awaited anticipation of the public restrooms to be opened. I was hoping.
I think so.
This weekend would be nice to have them. Especially with this heat, porta-potties, Johnny on the spot, whatever you want to call them, need to cut the belt.
You're kind of right.
The only other thing I would like to see possibly emergency management team discuss Wednesday is possibly moving three picnic, two to three picnic tables over to the beach. We only have one there right now. Everybody seems a crowd around it a little bit underneath that gazebo. One family gets there, they're there for the whole day. Nobody else has a chance to at least have something to settle. So I've noticed over the weekends and stuff, there's been a lot of families down there that laid out on the stand with their picnics and everything. If we could find a way maybe to put three more over there. I think we go four would be too much. Maybe we could see about getting three over there. The emergency management team would think it'd be all right.
Put more over there. Going to cause... Crowded?
It's crowded already.
It already is.
But I realize, I'm just thinking a family seating up off on the table versus on the stand.
And we're getting enough funds to put in another town beach?
A few people.
Oh, underneath emergency.
I mean, that's just what I've noticed over the weekend.
Yeah, it's busy down there.
At least two more. Other than that, I mean, the Parks and Rec has done a great job keeping the trash picked up in the bay for the way the bay is, especially this weekend. I went home Sunday afternoon. I could not believe the amount of people in the bay. Must have been seventy-five people on this one platform down there. It was impossible. But overall, everyone seems to be very cordial to each other down in the bay, which is very nice. Parks and Rec has done a good, outstanding job keeping the things picked up in the mornings. I do want to pass that along to you guys. Other than that, the town hall, that's been great coming in. I take it, Mr. Lucille, got the last two extensions up for you?
I think so.
Other than that, thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention, but I didn't want to do in the public. Anybody in the emergency management team is more than welcome to stop up to those barbecues that I am hosting, just to stop and tell all my employees thank you too. I think it would be great if they heard that from emergency management team.
Yes.
Along with the... Okay, that's all. Mr. Whitman?
Has the fire company decided whether or not they're doing the chicken barbecue for sure?
I don't know a hundred percent for sure, but they're definitely leaning towards it. Been working on the donations. The donations seem to be available.
I hope so. Very good. That's good chicken.
Oh, yeah.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I say one thing. Came to the town hall for the last emergency management meeting. Of course, I went through the greeter. That's fantastic. Good job. I went through it today and I gotta admit, I was against it first, but it...
It's working out, guys. It's working out nicely.
As long as you don't make big mess everybody, like Walmart has, it'll be happy.
She's a very pleasant person with the greeter.
She is.
Chairman, if you look at Walmart's sign, doesn't it say mandated? Yeah, it has a Sunday, which mandated now. Although one of us on TV said...
Market basket went the same way now.
I think they've already done that. Another word they used, more or less skirted it, but that's all right.
Nothing else, gentlemen? We'll move on from emergency management. Any other questions? Nothing else, we'll move on to announcements, being known submission of public comments, questions, concerns. The only thing, last week, we did have a complaint commended. We send that over to the building enforcement officers' desk to do with the development up on Route 11 across in Boca. We're stating some RSAs.
We, I don't remember that complaint. Did it get read to the board?
It was in the folders last week. I did not bring it, I must have missed it. It was not signed.
I don't remember it.
Was it completed? So we'll bring it up next week. I'll have Mary get it out again and put it out by this for next week.
The RSAs, is that what you said?
It stated some RSAs about stripping land and then twenty-five percent basal RSAs, clear their name with no committed plans. There are committed plans now for that project up there, so I know where it stands at this point. The letter that probably should be going to the enforcement officers, then he can respond to us about it.
Is this up on Route 11?
Yes, sir.
At the end? We have prints and everything that came in front of us.
I know, but they're talking about the old prints.
Yeah, talking about it.
So...
Yeah, but even with the tree removal, they've been working on it.
Okay, I want to say this complaint came in. I don't have it in progress. So I'd like to bring up next week's meeting to discuss it and see where it goes from there.
All right, because they've been in front of us for three years.
It should have been in everyone's package last week, not package, but in your mailbox last week. And I thought it'd be here this week. Didn't you see it?
Either way, it's only about the percentage of trees.
Percentage and the basal without having plants in place. So it should be read into the record. I thought it'd be here this week and my mistake in not making sure it was. But it was not signed. But it states certain RSAs, which I'm not familiar with, so John should look at it and go from there. If nothing else, being no appointments, we'll run the new business fire department snap coverage in your package, gentlemen. You have eleven, chief. Did ask Liz to get back to the chief and have him do homework for us what the exact cost would be and what he's requesting. Social security benefits and everything, how this will affect the overall budget. The chief, you should have that in your package tonight. You should have brought it from last week about expenses.
Have a sheet I can give you with that.
Yes, sir, that would be backwards. Did you have anything else on the wages, chief?
As far, anything up in the wages?
Well, you stated in your letter, this would be up to fifty-five thousand consumer with the issues, I understand that. Is that fifty-five thousand in your letter to us? Is that plan on Medicare, Medicare and all of that?
That is just wages. Yeah. So the retirement system would have to be added to that, and that's what's on this sheet here. Sheet I handed out. It's basically split up between a single person, a two-person, and a family plan. The retirement system, monthly wages, what we pay or what the town has to pay for employee for their medical and their dental. And then have it broken up to the total for six months and the total for twelve months.
Okay, single person, you got wages monthly, so it's about forty-five eighty-three is what the individual would be paying.
Yeah, that's the highest for starting.
And it's thirty cents on the dollar, is that what you tell us?
Um, so the retirement system is a thirty point nine, thirty point zero nine percent contribution from the town. So that's, it's put into a decimal just to make the math work out in the formula for itself.
So total cost to the town, if you're asking any comment total, or just say, let's say, six months right now, it'd be thirty-nine thousand or fifty-nine?
If they're on a single-person plan. If they're on a family plan, you're looking at...
Ten ninety-seven thousand dollars.
And that's, the wages are really what can change. That's based on a scale that's within twenty-twenty-one mid-max structure that was sent out.
Yeah, this is, got to figure it for the max.
I guess, it's not figured for the complete max, it's the max that I'd be willing to start somebody at.
That's what I'm asking.
And that's really, it's about, it's a little more than halfway up the high end of the captain's bay.
Fifty, fifty hours a week?
Depending on if they go to training every week. But it would be a forty-eight hour position and then the option to go to training two hours. Now, again, we still have that Garcia ruling where overtime doesn't come in until fifty-two hours with the environment based on their schedule. Part of the idea is to have somebody that can sit there and be the, basically ship commander, handle the calls, handle the day-to-day operations, so I can do, I honestly thought I was made up to do all that. But with that and the stuff in the office, it is, it's just too much. So having this person that can get projects going and keep them going, having the stability of a single person that's there most, you know, four days a week, and having them work the twelve hours allows if somebody calls out sick, there's already a person, we would just drop down to the two instead of the three for the day. And that would be the same thing if they go on vacation. We wouldn't necessarily fill that position. We would let them have their vacation time, drop down to two, like we've been doing.
Getting a lot of holes in the shifts this time of year.
It comes and goes. Summertime is obviously the hardest. The weekends in August are pretty difficult to fill. And that's, you know, the other thing we have here is this is nobody's full-time commitment. Right, so everybody has another full-time commitment, plus family life, plus hobbies and whatever.
With the tight energy.
You know, they're a very dedicated group. We're getting plenty of hours out of most of the people, but, you know, sometimes you just want to have your life.
Yeah, we've been pretty lucky over the years.
We really have, while it is...
Yeah. Chief, so looking at your expenditures to date, right now, the ambulance account at our time is one eighty-nine thirty-three. That was as of the end of June. You have fifty-seven percent of the... But call company, you have fifty-nine percent, that's almost sixty percent, which is pretty good for this time of year, halfway through the year. Do you believe you could soak up that forty, forty-five thousand dollars within those four lines? Because I noticed your part-time is up, is right at the max, but almost fifty percent for a half year.
And if you get to forty-four, just hit...
Forty-five thousand for this time. I'm going to six months because I'm going to the end of the year.
Plus the fifty-five.
Forty-five thousand for six months is what the total costs is.
Yeah, that would be the total cost for six months.
For the insurance.
No, for payroll, retirement, medical and dental.
I misunderstood that.
So for six months, the total max cost would be forty-five thousand fifty-six dollars. So I'm looking at this individual who would be put in this position, be running ambulance, be certified to be on the ambulance, plus injured driver.
That's one of the best parts is you'll guarantee there's somebody that's going to be able to drive the truck.
So part of that salary could be taken out of the ambulance line item?
Of the part-time?
Yeah.
That part-time line item is already there. You fill shifts.
You fill shifts.
And so part of my proposed budget, there is extra money in there for extra manpower during storms and emergency events, and I cut that portion of the budget right now to help make up for this. If you look at the, and I haven't brought up proposed budget because I haven't gone to anybody yet, but the proposed budget that I was building, it has a total of forty-two lines. I reduced eleven of those lines at the best I could. Now, last year, I did reduce the entire budget by three percent. I put the budget really as tight as I could just to be upfront, honest with you guys. You know, we reduced the budget to where I thought it needed to be. Adding a person, reducing more of that budget isn't going to help.
Right, right.
You know what I mean? Five, only five lines have increased, but eleven lines have decreased. And that's what I'm going to propose in this year, this budget coming.
No, I'm just wondering where is going to set your overall bottom-line budget for the end of the year?
Didn't add in the medical, the dental, and the retirement system because that doesn't all come out of my budget? I believe that comes out of one of the town administrators' budgets. So the wages were added with the other increases. So last year, or this year, the budget is nine hundred seventy-eight thousand and fifty-two. The new proposed budget would be one million seventeen thousand nine hundred and two, which is an increase of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty. And the increases are only in wage lines and our dispatch line.
So you're looking at about a four percent increase.
Yeah, four percent increase.
So if this is budget time, I'd have no problem. We're in the middle of the season. I know you've got staff shortage and I want to see a way to make this work.
This is proposed for next year's budget.
This position here, you want it now? You don't want it now?
Nope. No, I'm getting your input for next year.
The way I look at it, I thought it was to build into six months.
Twenty-twenty-one, six months just to kind of, and I'm not, I'm not trying to hide it from anybody. I'm trying to ease it in. So propose next year at this time for a six-month to get it started.
So you want, so twenty-twenty-one, you want to be able to hire someone in July, start July first, the six months to get that.
Right through the summer.
Yep.
Yes.
The one thing I like about it is make sure you have the staff coverage. Two is that gives you your weekends off if you need it and you don't have to schedule yourself on. Secondly, you have a second person in command that's full-time, that has a little more fight into the game versus just being part-time.
Right. Makes a difference.
And I think you need that somebody second commander that's going to be full-time, not just a firefighter. Is this position somebody can promote from then or you would go?
I would really hope so. We have some very good candidates. Absolutely, we've invested in them, they've invested in us.
It makes a difference with all employees.
Yeah, and it all depends on, it depends on the employee's interest, right? So you have a full-time job somewhere else and this is your part-time job and you make this your full-time job. You all of a sudden lose your part-time job and that may have a funding problem for you. So it all, it all depends on the person.
Mr. Holt?
Yes, sir. New kid on the block again. I moved to Alton, I was kind of shocked still seeing a volunteer firefighter. Do we have any plans? Actually, possibly going little by little into a full-time fire department?
That's his job and that's what he's going to. He went to, right now, I believe, has four full-time firefighters, correct?
They have three full-time firefighters, a full-time chief, and they're going for their fourth one this year.
We just started full-time ambulance. I would consider so busy. And it's been being talked about for twenty years now.
In my opinion, the reality is the first team staff is band-aided. It's, it's working, but eventually it's...
That's what happens. Volunteers, you know, hard to get. We've been lucky over the years, knock on wood. We've had a great bunch of guys down there that are all showing up and... All the fire departments with that.
This is a very, for the most part, a fairly young staff and they're very dedicated.
Yeah. That's what you need.
Well, chief, I have no problem with your request going forward. I share the way I've read it. It was going to be to try to get these six months in the cover.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that to you.
Well, I appreciate it. You'll have my full support for your time, especially where you're only talking a four percent increase, which I think is very modest considering the times are...
And I want to be clear, that's four percent with a six-month window. You know, because there's six months of coverage there, so it's going to be a little higher next year to be called as a coverage.
No problem, gentlemen. You have no...
I mean, I think it's a good idea to bring, if there's somebody in the department that's interested in coming up the ranks and they need what is needed, I think it's a good idea to give us a heads-up on this for twenty-twenty-one. I appreciate it. I think it's well worth it.
But if there's any pressure down there.
Yeah, I think it really will.
Anything else for the chief then?
No, I just would hope that it could be somebody in-house.
I really hope so too.
I think just...
We have a lot of very good candidates in there, yeah.
I think all the employees look at that that they, everybody stands a chance if you promote in-house.
Yep. As you know, we lost some employees to full-time employment.
We've lost a lot over the years that way, but that's passed the course. Yeah, but we've been real lucky that the volunteers we have that go down there.
Well, chief, thank you. We're going to see in a budget time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
I just appreciate we've got this possible.
I know, when I first read it, I thought it was...
I thought it was for today.
Yeah, but then after I read through it, I started, when I read through it, I realized, very good, Chief.
I used to get warnings.
Hey, gentlemen, number two, New Riverside Cemetery Engineering Bid List. Mr. Roberts gonna join us in person later, or is he on the phone yet? Okay. Do we have Mr. Roberts on the phone, sir?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, sir.
How are you tonight?
Very good, you saw, sir.
Good, fine, thank you. Now, we got your list here. Hold on, we're gonna see if we can turn you up, Ken. Volume-wise, that is.
I shut the video off. Try that?
Ken, did you say something?
Yes, sir.
There we go, I can hear him now.
Thank you.
Ken, we're in front of your list, and I have a memo for the New Riverside Cemetery. It says, please advise for further information to be added, and any changes should be made prior to establishing big specifications. You wanna just highlight anything on this, Ken, other than what we've read?
Um, yeah, just, this is just a part of the list that I was given, you know, gave to you last year, and this is a coordination between the Parkson Rec. Director and myself of what we thought was gonna be needed for the new cemetery. Uh, and it should be included within the engineering specifications. And the reason it came to the board this way is to ask you, as all the board members, because everybody's got experience, is there anything that they, they would think that we're missing that needs to be added to this? And if they could just, uh, make a note and then get them all back down to me, or get them to the town administrator so they can get them back down to me? I think I've pretty much covered it, but they can always miss things.
Kenny, on the boring, on the boring, you don't wanna go to seven or eight feet to make sure that we're not sitting right on ledge, that we've got, um, deep enough, so we're deep enough that we know that, you know what I mean? Because your graves are at six feet, and you've got your borings to stop at six feet.
Uh, the borings would be calculated, I, I'm sorry, the borings, I think, should be calculated by the engineer. If he determines that we need to go nine or ten feet, just to find out where it's at. Because I think he's gonna have to find it, and then he's gonna have to map it in order to figure out what he's gonna do for a proposal to show you exactly the way it should be done. He's gonna have to find all the ledge on the property itself.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But the six feet was just to determine, was, I'm sorry.
But, um, the wall and roadside drainage on Route twenty-eight area, you had mentioned at one point, um, the state possibly helping to step in to do anything with the, with the wall, continue the wall? Was that correct?
Well, the drainage, they offered me the pipes and stuff in order to do the drainage along Route twenty-eight, reconnect back to their pipes. That would be entirely up to the engineer, how he, how he wants to lay that out. And I think with some discussion with the state, that they would donate the pipe and everything. So, even though we're putting it in, uh, we'd be able to connect drainage off of the cemetery to that same drainage system.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, the next thing, the only thing I have in reading this, do you think it's time that the town won't take vault system for the winter time? We've always relied on that loophole down at Old Riverside Cemetery. We were very lucky this year when the pandemic, the pandemic started, that we were afraid that it might fill up fast, and that possible that we would've had a trailer or something, or have the funeral homes refrigerate. Just wondering if it's time that that one down there might've outlet its usefulness into some time, maybe it put up something a little more mortar, and that could hold a more refrigerated unit in case we ever come into this situation again.
Uh, for location would be up to the engineer, behind the maintenance shed, that there actually, ledge is very much on top of the ground, and maybe that'd be a place to put a type of, uh, refrigerated unit above ground, right, right in that area. You know, that would be the utilization of the property of how you would wanna lay it out with the engineer.
Do you wanna add that to the engineering list? I think we should, that's a great idea.
That's what I'm throwing out.
Yeah, because this one's aged out, I think.
It should be added, yeah.
Are you looking for a refrigerated unit to carry...
Or even just a brick unit, on where to put it down there, and, you know what I mean? Where we can put it out of the way, save money without, you know, because if it's sitting on ledge, it'd be all right.
Yep, and it'd be utilization of the property. I mean, are we looking for something that would carry twelve units, fourteen, sixteen units?
I would say a possibility of between ten and fifteen units.
Okay, sir, yeah, I can add that to that.
You gentlemen agree with that?
How many do we get in comparison?
The rest, I think, is only, what, six? Ken?
I'm not positive with that. I would have to check with, uh, Jim the Sexton, see how many goes in there.
I believe it was two all went along. And we were very fortunate.
I think it's a good idea to add to the plan and price it out. Well, I think it sets the town up for later on down the road, yes.
Now, Kenny, that well that you have listed in there, that's just a shallow well, that's all from, correct? No? Or is that an artesian well?
I, I think that was a artesian well, but don't quote me on it, and again, I don't know. Whatever was done for the, that's actually the old well that goes to the property.
Goes to the old farmhouse that was there, that was an artesian well.
Right, so it's never been tested, so we don't know gallons per minute or anything else out of it. But can that assist in, with the existing in order to do irrigation? That would have to be figured out by, uh, the engineer once he starts doing layouts.
Nope, that's fine, what I see in the list is fine, we can just add in the, uh, new vault refrigeration in it.
Yeah, well, I've had the option on refrigeration.
Option on refrigeration, that's fine.
As usual, it should be on in the winter, because it's a winter time. Right, and you're in brick.
The problem was this summer during the pandemic, when they weren't gonna allow us to bury anybody that well.
But we should have it.
We would've had to move those bodies out, find refrigeration units for the families, or require the families to remove them, put them somewhere. And I think at this, that point in time, that would've been a little hard on the family saying, we're gonna have to pull you, the family's remains out of there and put them somewhere else.
But I think we should be on the option, right? Set it up as an option, have it built, that's the issue, you could do a hook it in.
So, we're fine with that? You have Mr. Roberts go ahead and get this RFP together, and we can get it out there for some prices, right? All right, I don't need it, uh, I only need the consensus. Leave on that, is that right?
Yes.
All right, Ken, we're, I know with that one, we're gonna move on to the next whole new business, would be budget expenses year-to-date, before we come back to you, Ken, on the highway department, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, gentlemen, you know, we all asked for mid-year expenses in six months, seven to us from last week. Do you know if you had any concerns or comments on it? Did bring one up to Liz during the week, and that was on the water department. Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you. Yes?
So, you'll all see at your seat, one of these expenditure reports, it's dated to date, there's a green tab sticking out from the side. This is, this is as of today, this is from the finance manager. If you go to the last page where the green tab is, Ruben had asked for the percentage spent year-to-date, and all these notes on here are from the finance manager, so we're doing well. We're under the percentage that we were at last year.
What's that?
That don't mean you can spend more this week.
No, the current concern I have, even though the water department has used of fees, which are paid by the users to pay for the water department, still affects our bottom line, okay? So, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to see what the percentage, X percentage was left at that mid-year she gave it to date, which is forty-eight point three-eight percent, which is very good, because we're going into the third week of July.
Right. Had a lot of breaks, and we've added a crossover pipe down behind Fiddleheads. That's gonna connect Bonds Avenue to School Street, so when we do that project, should be able to back it up.
But I'm not saying anything bad about the water. No, no, I know they've been busy, I know they've been doing repairs and doing the diligence, but it's like if it was the fire department, we'd still have to watch that, how it affects the overall bottom line of the town, because we cannot have spent over those bottom lines unless we got permission because of the COVID issue. All I'm, all I'm saying is, we said we watch each department, have our concerns. Right. So, it doesn't affect the overall bottom line, and that's what I have to watch, is the overall bottom line.
Almost the end of July, only fifty-one percent.
Courtney did put a letter out there for us, that's a good job. It's like the truck, there was unanticipated expenses for the truck, there was unanticipated expenses for the levy car, the FD, which we put in.
To cut out that line's total.
She probably in attendance right now too.
My last expenditure report reflected forty-eight percent, which we just lost, we're two-hundred-and-thirty-seven. Just gotta keep an eye on it each week. And also run three hundred feet of water main for the school, finally create a loop, which they've talked about that, and I was part of the Williams project down there anyways. So, I, like I said, I have no problems. It's just that when you're going through by department and by department, you need to ask questions. Courtney would like to comment on it, that'd be fine, if she's there on the phone with us.
Hi, I'm here.
Good evening, Courtney, good evening.
How are you?
Good, and I hope you're having a good night. I'm sure you just heard my comments and my concerns.
Yep.
And that's all they were, like I was reviewing every, every department. There was a couple of departments that were below that fifty percent come the end of June. So, I didn't get that. I mean, overall, you gave a good, you gave a good report back to Liz on why there's certain expenses there, so that was great. That helped answer a few of my questions.
Yep, um, like I said, I mean, this is our busy time, so just like any year, we, we do a lot of digging. In the summer, we freshen up projects, and, and towards the end of the year, we kinda teeter off. So, we're all looking a little higher, but we've gotten a lot done, and unfortunately, it's, we're still just in the reactive state. I mean, our excavator has not stopped in three weeks. It's the first time it's been back to the shop, was today, and we got two calls for other leaks that turned out to be nothing. Um, but, you know, we, we are doing projects as we can to prepare for future projects. Like Mooney Street, we have two taps on there. Um, Mooney Street is a galvanized line that has eight, eight patches in the pavement. Um, there's two six-inch taps there that are, so we can run a new main down that road, um, and get away from the two-inch main and upsize it to six-inch, which is gonna help the fire flow in the entire area. Um, that's not completed, but it's ready to go when we have the time and the fees to do that. Um, then obviously, we've had the, the issue at, um, at the school with the cistern and the low fire flows. We're gonna have that loop there, that's gonna be a six-inch line. And actually, that project, um, right now, we've completed half the project with the inventory we've had on site. I just had to buy four pieces of pipe, um, to, to continue it past Scott's parking lot. Um, so, we're actually gonna get out of that a lot cheaper than, um, we would if we were to just buy the, the pipe and the materials to do that. Um, so, I, you know, I keep an eye on it every week. I get, uh, I get a report every week of our revenues coming in and our, and our expenses, and, um, I played with the numbers today. I, I think the biggest thing that we need to, to focus on, and I understand you guys are concerned about the numbers, but the work that we're putting in right now and the long-term savings that we're, we budgeted for thirty-three thousand dollars for electricity for this year, because we fixed so many leaks. Um, I just got our electric bill for this month, but we're only at ten thousand dollars spent. So, that your, your pumpage cost, your electricity cost, and your treatment costs are completely cut in half. Um, so, you know, it's easy to focus on that bottom number, but what has the work that's gone into it is gonna set us up for the future, um, so hopefully, our budget can go down in the upcoming years. So, I know the forty-eight percent is, is, uh, kind of a scary number, um, but two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars, I think is, is very good going into, coming into the fall. We're gonna be closing our project, so I'm actually, I'm really excited where we stand, to be honest with you.
Not that it's a very number, but as a budgetary person looking at it, also runs a business, we, when, your numbers also affect the whole bottom line of the town, and also can affect other departments. So, that was the only reason I brought it up to her, not that I was questioning the work that's done or anything else. But if you just, safe for chance, if you went over your bottom line, then that means somebody else in the town would have to cut back on theirs. Just because we bring in revenues on that department doesn't mean, you know, we can always use them. We have to also cut back at somebody else's department. So, that's all I asked, is just wondering where we, where we stood at, what possibly could be bringing coming up. I understand the expenses of the water department. So, I really have no problem, you highlighted it in your letter to Liz, I'm very satisfied with that.
Perfect.
Do you have any other questions for Courtney?
No. Good job, Courtney, thanks.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, you guys have a good night, stay cool. All right.
With the, is there nothing else on budget expenses for you, gentlemen?
Just one question, my sir. Solid waste and advertising. What's the two-thousand-six-hundred-eight for advertisement? I don't understand that one, I guess.
It's a line item.
The line item is advertising.
And what's the four-digit code, the budget code?
Uh, it is... Solid waste operation, it, uh...
One-eight-three.
What is it?
One-eight-three, yes, one-eight-three.
Okay, but what's the four digits?
Four-three-two-four.
I'm not gonna know from looking at it, but...
Just curious. I mean, I know we put a dollar in for budgeted.
Expended, twenty-seven bucks.
Twenty-seven dollars, but what's the, what's two-thousand-six-hundred-eight?
That's the three digits?
One-eight-three. The three digits, uh, one-eight-three. Is that a misprint?
Twenty-six dollars and eight cents is what was balanced, is remaining expended is twenty-six oh eight. I wanna say, I'm gonna say it's a misprint.
All right, thank you, I, I spotted it.
So, there was a, there was some sort of a bill for twenty-seven dollars, and they said, let's put it over by twenty-six.
I'm just making sure that it doesn't end up being two thousand.
Actually, it should've been, I, I think, that's the percentage left.
Right, that's the percentage line, so that's why I questioned it.
The percentage to the one-dollar line.
Right, okay, thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen, on the budget? Well, overall, I think the town between revenues and budgets are doing very well, other than what we, some of us had forecasted, or what even the state had forecasted, of course. I think we've done very well, we owe the taxpayers greater gratitude for paying their taxes on time, and also with the department, it's keeping the budget.
I had one, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the tax, primary tax revenue, it's got six percent in front of it, what's that mean, six percent?
So, I was gonna bring this up under TA report, but I can bring it up right now, that's fine. Um, so, the, the highlighted balance, you'll see this document at your seat, it's titled unpaid balances report. This is from the tax collector, it's one sheet, this is the MSI format. And you'll see over on the right-hand side, there's a highlighted dollar amount. That is what has not yet been paid from this billing.
Six-hundred-one-one thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight, nine thousand eighty-eight dollars, property tax.
And that is six percent of the total amount due, the ten million that's written down here on the bottom of the table.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Lisa Noyes, the tax collector advises, this is really good.
This is really good?
Yeah.
Boy, they've been through and everything, this is great.
The taxes are coming in.
That's what she's got left, this is six percent.
They said line was July first.
Really good.
Okay, big sense.
Very good for all.
Anything else on the budget expenses, gentlemen? If not, I'll close all new business this time, move on to old business. We can have Mr. Roberts back on the phone? Put that on the old boat launchers, number two, underneath old business.
Okay.
It's in old, that's all.
You're in order in the book. We're done with new business, we only have three items.
Highway department.
We want the old business, number one, which is highway department, one-ton truck bid discussion. Mr. Roberts back on the phone, Ken, you're back with us again.
We don't have a sheet.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. So, Mr. Roberts came to me earlier last week, and he has to put this on so we can come and explain it to you. The one-ton went out for bid, advertised it, he put it out there, nobody responded to the bid on the closing dates. Coming back to ask you, I believe, if you go into the fleet program, and we have done with Dodge, which Chief Pete has established by nine over. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ken, this time.
Okay, we've gone one step further since I talked to you, Ruben, and what we did is we called each dealership that it was sent to, and tried to find out why we didn't get a bid. Uh, we actually got a few people that said they didn't receive it. So, what I would like to ask the board, I'd like to send it all back out to bid again. This time, uh, we're gonna send emails, phone calls, and then the town hall will send out the actual written bid again, and we'll try the whole thing one more time, and if that doesn't work, we'll come back to the Board of Selectmen and request to go to the fleet program.
Do you have any final?
Go ahead.
Mr. Holt?
I'm a little confused, what are we gonna be doing?
He's gonna back out the bid.
I'm gonna back out the bid.
Oh, okay.
At first, he wasn't going to, he was gonna call all, everyone that they sent it out to, that they know, we send bids out to, plus advertising, find out why nobody responded. So, he just stated why, someone said they never received it or heard about it. So, he's gonna put it back out to bid, make the phone calls to the respective areas of all the dealerships, and say, would you like to put a bid in, plus advertise it again, is my understanding.
Well, times are tough in the truck and automobile industry, because these plants have been shut down with the virus. And they're all having problems getting vehicles.
Yeah, I disagree.
Well, you can be, there's plenty of trucks out there.
Well... Okay.
I think we should give it another shot.
Definitely give it another shot.
Kenny, I have a blessing, go ahead and put it back out to bid.
Thank you, sir.
And next one, gentlemen, we're gonna move on to boat launch, so we'll keep you right on the phone, sir.
Yes, sir.
Quote in there from, um, Wimsey Sock Marine Construction, the quote is regards to Alton Bay Boat Ranch, to set three contracts, three concrete slabs only, sit down, all just sponsored by the stone, have the area level, and ready for Wimsey Sock Marine to set the concrete slabs. Cat Barred with X grade of two men, priced two thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents. So, Ken, I'll let you have it at this point.
Okay, so, what we looked at is, the decision we need from the Board of Selectmen tonight is actually where the money's coming from, so we can start the wetlands permit application fee. Uh, the theory is, is a three-inch stone, I actually have in-house. That's some of the stuff that came from the cemetery many years ago, I have in the pit. We can wash it here on the pavement, and then clean it all up, and then we put it in one-ton bags in order for the delivery. Also, we can do that with the three-quarter inch stone, which is also in the pit that was crushed last season. And we'll just have to wash it, and we put it in these bags, and the only thing I can do is walk down the ramp with my excavator, which I can reach about thirty-one feet without getting into the water, be able to hang those bags over where we need them, and then trip them. If we can get this done quick enough, and get the permit in hand, and get coordination with Winnie Marine, uh, to do the one, two-day project and have it done, I might be able to convince some of my men to actually take a swim in the water and help me level this, and I know Paul has volunteered as well.
Ken, Ken, do you know what the permit is gonna cost?
Uh, I think it was two thousand dollars total, sixteen hundred for the application fee, and four hundred was the DES fee. Uh, I think it was two thousand dollars total, sixteen hundred for the application fee, and four hundred was the DES fee.
Thank you.
So in running it through a couple of these numbers, you know, we're talking, you know, about twenty-four hundred for the slabs, about two thousand for the permit, and whatever, uh, Winnebago Marines was twenty-one something. So we're, we're talking a little over six thousand dollars, uh, that would have taken.
How long does it usually take for a permit to come through, once you apply for it?
It can take anywhere between thirty and seventy-five days.
Well gentlemen, we have a lot of folks that use that boat ramp besides just residences, a lot of the tour issues, there's a lot of business into our community revenues, but also provides a place for our residents to launch their boats. Unfortunately, right now, we have a sign, as you know, at this point here, drop off twenty-six feet. Put that up to protect the town for one July, but we protect the people that are, they, um, backing in. You notice that the fireworks could not go off in full July, which is fourteen thousand dollars, would have been fourteen thousand dollars. You have that money in there that you can use, I'm not one for using money for something we cancel or don't have. But I think it's imperative, considering the efficiency game, kind of, I don't know what you call it down there. It's going to be a good year until that's ready again, and it could be more damages and stuff like that, on people's vehicles and cars. Plus, that ramp was put in many, many years ago by volunteers and the townspeople. Take access because it's limited, I think it's only proven if we continue on that access to the stock. We should keep it fixed up and then put it, put it efficient.
I think we need to fix it, a lot of people use it, and it's actually a very good attraction. I think we need to fix that, keep it up, I think we need to put a sign there for boat launching.
Got the, uh, firework money, and same area of town, and it's important for the commerce in the town, so.
As long as it's okay to use monies from funds.
Yeah.
If it's okay, we can do that, I think it's a good idea. I even think we should have a sign, and the sign, as silly as it may sound, but a fine for, for doing power-ups. Hope, I think. Very bad, very bad. Very strong, just hope.
Be concerned, the project is doable, we got to go. It's where we're going to get the money. Now. If you look at the, that fireworks budget, that spells out exactly what it's for. It's not for the boat.
That's, that's, we're bottom, we bottom-line budget, so we can move money around if we have to.
Oh, no, I, I understand that, but I believe you're supposed to have an account that you can put that into, like, uh, the. How do you, how do you word it, just, you, you know, we have the one-dollar accounts, that's to cover our budget so we can expend money. Now, you can overspend in an account.
You just got to underexpend another one.
But you have to be careful, spending money out of an account that doesn't exist.
You can't spend money, you can't overexpend an account unless you underexpend another account, because we're bottom-line budget. We cannot go over the bottom line.
You put a dollar in these accounts, but I've quite a few of them.
That's to keep them open.
Yeah, so you can expend out of those accounts.
That's right, but you've got to underexpend out of another account to cover it.
That's the balance, that's not the legal end of it.
That is the legal end of it, because you can't go over the bottom line.
I understand, come on. What I'm saying is, I believe you're supposed to have an account to take that out of that qualifies. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, there is, there is one line, it's unanticipated expenses. Unanticipated expenses.
I saw that.
You have a contingency account?
That's in yours.
How much is in that?
Be on the agenda.
About four thousand dollars is left in that right now, but here's the thing, if you take the money out of the fireworks line, and, and only the selectmen can do that by a motion, transfer it into the, let's say, unanticipated expenses line, because we don't have a town boat launch line. Um, you have to remember, going forward in twenty-twenty-one, when you get your expenditure reports, and your revenue reports, and your proposed budgets and everything, the difference, you know, why is, why was this extra amount expended out of the unanticipated expenses line? And what, what happened to the fireworks money and everything? So you have two ways you can do it, you can do it that way, which I don't recommend for bookkeeping purposes, or you can expend it out of the fireworks line. Because this is kind of, I want to say an emergency, but it's money that is not being used this year, per, per, you know, decisions made, um, and it's available. And it is a bottom-line budget, Virgil is absolutely correct. Where Senate Bill Two Town, it's a bottom-line budget, the grand bottom line, ten million whatever dollars. But you always want to remember, you know, when it comes time for the proposed budgets and everything, the explanations of, if you didn't have fireworks, why was, you know, ten thousand dollars spent out of the fireworks line? And this is exactly why.
It has to clearly be explained.
But that's up to you, that's up to Liz, because we're all going to look at you and say, what'd you do with it?
Can you answer one question, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Why do we have one-dollar accounts?
If we know at the time last year a budget for the boat ramp, we probably would have put in the boat ramp. This came up all of a sudden, in the spring. I'm not a boat enthusiast, so, but I'm a boat enthusiast, came up, we have a situation down there that is a liability for the town, I believe. If I guess I, if I hadn't, that's why you're form brief, I would put it on the parks and grounds maintenance stock expense. But we, and let that bottom line, let that line item overexpend.
This come up, Bob, I brought it up, because there was a three-trailer boat, they hooked a record to it, couldn't get it out, ripped the axle off.
No, there's no question. No, no, there's no question, the project doesn't have these line items.
We closed a lot of these dollar lines, we closed a bunch from the last couple of years. But they, but as budgets go through, you'll see, you'll see them build right back up.
You know, actually, how this came about because of.
Let that overspend out of the plan.
And have to go places to dunk the boats. That's where it started, this last year, they started talking about boat ramp and public use of it. And so I know the Marines both said something about it, and then people started to show concern, where are we going to dunk it? And we'll, yeah, so that's why this is.
Yeah, because I've seen it down there, I've seen the boats.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Roberts.
There's an awful lot of people talking, and you only hear one, maybe two people out of the four that are talking.
Thank you for ringing me back in, I appreciate that, so. Thank you, and that's right gentlemen, we've, we've got to remember, we're on that phone there, so we're all talking, it sounds like.
Ken, I didn't know you were still there.
Hold on just a second. So we're all agreeing, the boat ramp's got to be fixed.
And I would.
That's it, Railroad Square Park, Railroad Square Parks across the street. Hold on just a second. That railroad park is across the street with the new gazebo, I believe.
Yes.
The what? What's the name of the park that's on the water where the town boat launches? There's a name for it, I thought that was Railroad Square Park.
No, Railroad.
There's a, there's a park named.
Really? Go out, find that one up.
But it, so if that park name is in the grounds of maintenance budget, so all the parks are, then that would be the appropriate place to.
That's why I'd like to make a motion to allow Laura and you to get together, Laura and Liz to get together, to figure out what the best line item it should go in or come out of.
We can do that.
Maybe you're on the.
Keep right back. It needs to be done, Lee.
All right, gentlemen, do I have a motion to go ahead with the work to be done on the boat ramp? And the money, and have Liz and Laura find what line item will come out of, I believe it should be in, uh, grounds of maintenance three-nine-nine dockings.
So my, we're making a motion to allow them to decide what line, it might not be that line.
We'll bring it back to you.
Bring it back to you, but we need to get moving on with the wetlands permit. And get everything organized and we can get that fixed.
Yes.
So, I also made my room, wet work to go ahead and to get the work done on the boat ramp. Then Laura and Liz will come back to us, what line item will be coming, being expended out of. Seconded by.
Hey.
Mr. McDonald, do I have any further discussion? At this point, I will call for a motion, uh, boat, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Mc, uh, Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yeah.
And gentlemen, thank you, Ken, for bringing me back and all that, because I did let that get away, and I apologize.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we have a, is that motion include the proposals that have been given to you for as far as wetlands application, uh, shake concrete for the slabs, and for Winnie Marine to come down and set the slabs?
Yes, sir, I believe that's the way I want to mind motion to, is that the board's understanding?
Yes, I understand, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's everything, Ken.
Thank you. Moving on to Harmony Park, Virgil, last week you asked for stamp engineering plan, at your desk, gentlemen, you have the stamp engineering plan. When we saw this originally, our plan did not have a stamp on it, and they'd go, pull it out, the original stamp is there. And does that satisfy everybody's?
Town Hall, right, Liz?
Yes.
We don't really need to sit any time discussing this then, right?
No, no, I see the stamp.
Next, we're going to move on to number four, the new Riverside irrigation report. In your packet, you will have a letter from Kelly explaining and outlining everything about the new Riverside Cemetery. I want to know if this, that's curiosity about the irrigation of Brownland now. Do you still?
Yeah, it explains it, yes.
I don't think we need to bring Kelly on to conversation in the night, correct?
Do you have all the irrigation on, even out here on the square and stuff?
Yes, the parks and recs, when I come by in the morning, I've seen them out there about three times a week, having the irrigation on up front here.
Not the other parts.
Any other, no, if there's no other discussion, I want to thank Kelly for getting us this detailed report right back to us.
Thank you, Kelly.
If not, I'll move on to number five, signs, Mr. Holt, this is yours.
Yes, sir, on the way in tonight, I, well, this week I bought the signs we discussed at our last meeting. Uh, I believe we made a motion to have them re-moon, just letters sent or whatever, I just curious what the status was.
I put the letter in the, there's a letters in the, uh.
Reading file.
Reading file.
Yeah, but I mean, the signs are still there.
Mr. Roberts, are you still there with us?
Yes, sir.
Did you answer Mr. Holt's question on that?
Yes, I can. Uh, we've ordered the public parking only signs, where it says public parking, we've ordered three of them, they haven't come in yet. And also, we're trying to coordinate, uh, the guardrail people, so we don't want to start ripping down a whole bunch of stuff. What I'd like to be able to do is have the, the day the guardrail people come in, we will set the guardrail, pull all the signposts out, all the signs will be taken down, and the public parking signs will be put up. Uh, we're just trying to get a schedule from the guardrail people to come down and set those.
Do you have any kind of, uh, completion date or proposal?
Uh, I, I'm just waiting for the guardrail people to get back to me for a date that they can put me in, that they're going to be in the Alton area. Because I have other guardrail work.
Okay. Gentlemen, have any questions or concerns on this? All right, Ken, thank you.
Yes, sir.
At this point, we will move on to selectmen's reports, I'll look at Mr. Holt. Mr. Rochelle, Mr. Whitman. Uh, yeah, caught me by surprise there, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the, uh, the committee, uh, met on the fourteenth, we're moving ahead with the, uh, and the food trucks, I don't know at this point where the food trucks are coming from, that's yet to be determined, at least it was at our meeting. Um, we're going to meet again, uh, in two weeks from the last meeting, so I'll be in twenty-eighth. And we'll be finalizing things then, because we're getting pretty close to it. And we still don't know, I mean, it sounds like the butter departments, the thing, you know, and the water ban stand is definitely going to have the Friday night show.
Yes.
So we, we got an old home weekend, if we're a little bit.
Oh, this is awesome. He's talking about July, it's more than, um, one thing about July, but I, we're talking about August.
Right, right, but what I'm saying is, if you guys are going to do it, and fire companies are going to do it.
Unless emergency team says we can't, as, as of now, it's planned.
Right, because we're going to have to start promoting it once we have our next meeting, because it's getting pretty close.
Yeah.
I quite frankly think the town is just waiting to be able to do something with itself.
You want to call it a COVID party? Having those in New York City right now, and they're very upset about it, they'll take a protest all they want.
Anyways, anything else in your report, sir? Okay, Mr. McDonald.
No, not so much on I.
Mr. Whitworth, the only thing I have for you folks tonight, I did attend the last week's meeting, and Mr. She stays there, they're going to once-a-week meetings. Mr. Whitman, you were at the last meeting, correct?
Uh, version, no, Mr. Holt's.
Yeah.
Last Thursday.
Uh, Thursday. So after Mr. Holt, we kind of stopped the routine, Virgil, you going to go to the Wednesday's meeting, this Wednesday's meeting with me?
I'll be able to make it this Wednesday, so I'll be out of town.
Mr. Rochelle? You're available?
I'll make myself.
So now we're going down to once-a-week, so I'll try to remember to try to get each hold of who's next in flight. The other thing I want to ask you, do you want me to continue to pick up the packets, they won't be ready on Wednesday, they're normally ready on Thursday, so you'll have to guys, you'll have to come in and get your own packets.
Yeah.
We have a convenient, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, emergency managers team is working diligently, we're still trying to figure out, get the bathrooms open. Also, at some point, we do want to try to get town meetings up here, but right now, we're still holding off that. Cleaning and cleaning supplies are still a big issue, and if we're going to open up the public restroom, all the resources are going to have to go down. Because parks and records stretch pretty stressful right now, which is trying to do all the cleaning after every meeting. So if then, if you clean this whole room after every meeting, it really intensifies, put more pressure on where they might get any other responsibilities done. Other than that, that is all I have, so at this point here, I will turn over to town administrator for her report.
Thank you. Best, um, three things to report on. Uh, the first one is the document at your seat, it's a legal opinion on petition and poll licenses. You'll see a cover memo from me to you, and then attached is, um, information from the town attorney. Um, basically, the, the form, um, hasn't changed over, well, at least since two thousand and four. We did some research and tried to figure out, you know, thoroughly if there were some changes to the form or not and everything, but. Everything remains the same.
Yeah? Yes, sir. Was this your request, Virgil? This was his request, yes. Yeah, okay, I just want to get on this one page. Basically, what it says, and I'm, even in the right, even at the right exercise, utility does not have the right to interfere with or cause damage to town streets, building sidewalks, et cetera, I hope this answers the question.
I've just never seen the contracts written like that, that can add in the right of ways for conduit and everything else.
Any other questions about that, from the town administrator?
Okay, the next item I have is another opinion from the attorney, you'll see another memo at your seat. This one has to do with non-public minutes in the sealing, or the resealing of them. And you'll see if, uh, on the attached sheet is the town attorney's opinion on that, which is basically that it's not necessary to reseal them when you approve the minutes.
As long as we, as long as we seal them in open meeting. We're sealing them in non-public, and you're saying we didn't have to seal them in open meeting, and we do have to seal them in open meeting.
So the board sealing the minutes, once they come out of non-public session, is being done correctly?
That's what I was, that was my question, because we were sealing them in non-pub and not.
Here's, yes, for previously.
Just a few meetings ago, we sealed them in non-pub, and we, and we were told we didn't have to seal them in open session. And you've got to seal them, and it's an open session.
So I, I don't, I don't.
That was my question.
Okay, well, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't recall the board sealing them in non-public. If that had happened, I would have spoken up, because it's always done right after the motion to exit, then there's a motion to.
Once we get into.
Not divulged.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all in the same page with that one, right?
Yeah.
And then the last item is, you have another document at your seat, copy of it, Jack.
What is it?
Data Point Hampshire, this is our first reimbursement from the Gopher fund for the, um, request for reimbursement that we put in.
This is what we've already paid out?
This is for the first block of time period that we. This is for the first block of time period that we put in for reimbursement. There's three different blocks.
Right.
Yeah.
This is what we've paid out already?
Yeah.
They're all in the same. Reimbursed, check.
No.
They're all different, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is just reimbursement what we've already spent?
Yeah, for the first block, yeah.
Hey, no, we have any Gophers around here. Pretty good. We have to get some more Gophers, will you get that one more?
Anything else that has any questions about these pitches that can't make heads?
I thought they were actually nice autumn.
I would give you what you're looking at.
I thought they had quite a contrast of stuff.
That is, that is the end of the ramp that you're looking at.
Yeah.
There's big space that's underneath it.
I thought you were in space.
Thank you, host.
Oh, dark, dark hole there.
But that's what it is. That's the ramp. That's the ramp and that's the hole.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. Now, Mr. Chairman, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any approval of minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting? The only minutes we have to approve tonight?
Make a motion that we approve July thirteenth, twenty twenty selectmen minutes.
I'll second that for discussion.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, reading minutes of the July thirteenth, twenty twenty regular session, seconded by Mr. Holt for discussion. Mr. Holt?
Yes, on page two. Uh, first, what McDonald made a motion to not write another check to GMI until the town attorney signed, gives you your print from now. But at the top of the page, he, he made a motion. Usually we vote on motions.
Second, so it wasn't really discussed.
There, there was no second?
Right.
And normally, the minutes would show no second.
That's why, that's why he went home that night with his feelings, huh?
Yeah, I know. Okay. Alright, I had one other thing.
Why wouldn't you?
Next paragraph.
Why wouldn't it show no, there was no second?
Yeah, usually.
Because I asked for a second, there was no second. Now, maybe if you want gentlemen, the minutes to show or reflect that there was no second, we can do that in the future, but we've never done that.
Well, to me, I think it should go word for word. Whatever says on that tape, that's what should be in these minutes, word for word.
Well, well, I would like to tell you that everything on those tapes are word for word, and boy, but the state law, RSA ninety-one, says a general description
Right.
shall be made in the minutes. The general description basically only recalls, and you can get away with it, if I remember in this case, Laura, motions, motions and seconds and votes. They don't even have to put in the discussion of what you voted on. They don't want through the public minutes. It could just be made emotions and seconds. Well, this town has done for years, it's put in a good description of what was discussed.
But that's the problem, the problem is discussed up there, and the minutes don't reflect what's discussed.
But this is why we review it, so if you want something changed or added to it, this is the time to do it.
I just think all minutes should have to be word for word for what's on that tape.
Well, no, that, well, that's pretty difficult, in my opinion, but.
I wouldn't want the job. Especially, Mary has said the meetings in the past have been very nice to be able to do the minutes the last month or so, cause the meetings are shorter. But I'm sure later, after Mr. Roberts had to tell us to come back here a little bit, she's gonna haul right tomorrow because of all that Gavin that we're doing. So I'll feel the pressure of Mary tomorrow, but is there anything else on the minutes that might be changed or added? Mr. Holt?
The next paragraph at the end.
Delanteau?
Page two, is the large paragraph.
Yep.
Uh, I really didn't wanna bring this up, but it, we have this in writing. Ken Roberts committed that the private wall will be at least, uh, seventy-five days for the permitting process. And we've discussed this quite a bit, I believe, the private wall.
Yes, we have.
Well, private wall was fixed today, what I was.
That doesn't have anything to do with the minutes here.
It has nothing to do with us.
We're just, we're just voting on the minutes. If you, if you had issue with that, you shouldn't have brought it up in the whole business, but we're, we're just voting on the minutes now.
Okay, I, well, I just want the board to know that it's, it's in the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Did we make the motion?
Yeah, the motion made by Mr. Roberts to approve, as I mentioned, second by Mr. Holt. Any further discussion?
No.
At this point, I'll, I'll roll call Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes. We didn't have none pub last week?
We did not have none pub.
No, really?
Okay.
Let me get on this order. Next gentleman, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda as submitted by the assessing department on number one and number two, police department, annual contract approval, the Hachimane Society, twenty twenty contract.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Made by Ruben, approve the consent agenda as submitted by the assessing department, number one item and number two item, police department, annual contract approval, the Hachimane Society, twenty twenty contract, seconded by Mr. Rochelle. Any discussion? I'll hold the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, posting affirmative. Discretionary action requests for appointments, no discussion, majority vote required to allow, not to allow appointments being done. And gentlemen, I need a motion going to non-public session under the RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, paragraph two E and A.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Public going non-public session under the RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, paragraph two E and A, seconded by Mr. Holt. I'll hold the board, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Yes, we have no non-public session. We will be coming out of non-public session and just Josh will be here to make sure the public isn't falling. Non-public session? We're back, we're back in public session, coming out of non-public session at seven thirty-seven, gentlemen, I need a motion to seal, not to involve us, the minutes of the non-public session under E.
Which is, which is on the cheat sheet that we have to, you have to tick the reason each time. I recommend small letter B, which is would render a proposed act ineffective.
A second to that.
Second. Mr. McDonald, second, any discussion? Hold the board, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
You're the affirmative. We set them in there. Gentlemen, at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn for the evening to see you next Monday night. You'll say just that?
Did you second those virtual?
Yeah, I did.
Motion to adjourn. So I can adjourn, the floor shall second by Mr. Holt, I'll hold the board, Mr. Holt? Yes, Mr. Rochelle?